I want to welcome everybody to the Prescott Council Candidate Forum. My name is Brad Fain and I will be your moderator for this evening's forum. I'd like to acknowledge, first, our sponsors for hosting tonight's events, the Prescott Chamber of Commerce, the Yavapai County Contractors Association, and Talking Glass Media. Second, I would just like to thank and acknowledge all of our candidates. This can be a very thankless job, and you're in the public eye all the time, and there's always experts sharing their opinions with you, and it's nice to see a good set of candidates running and helping our community grow forward. So, thank you all for your contributions. So, I think it's important for all of us in the room and for the candidates to know our purpose for tonight. So, tonight's purpose is to provide the voters an opportunity to understand each of your positions on some important items facing the city of Prescott. As a part of our democracy, voter engagement is critical, and the need for voters to get honest and clear answers is essential for democracy to succeed. Tonight's format is very simple. Tonight's candidate's forum is simple yet pointed in nature. Each candidate will be asked five questions. Each question is centered around a current relevant topic. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. The candidates will be given a 30-second time notification, as they are approaching the end of their allotted time, to give them time to wrap up their thoughts and comments. And then, at the end of the time, a stop notification will be raised, and then we'll move on to the next question and the next candidate. Any questions from the candidates? I thought we would start tonight just by a real simple introduction, just so the people in the room know who their candidates are. I'd like each of you just to begin by stating your name and how long you've lived in our community of Prescott. We'll start with Mayor Good.
Thank you, Brad, and what a great turnout. It was great to be here. I've been on the city council for four years before I was elected mayor two years ago. Prior to that, I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for two years, and I was also, prior to that, elected to the Central Yavapai Hospital District Board of Directors. So, permanent in Prescott, a little less than 10 years, but seasonal for about seven or eight years prior to that. I always prided myself on the fact that I read the Daily Courier every single day for five years before we were finally able to make our transition here permanently.
Thank you.
We'll get this right.
Pass to the top.
Thank you for the question, Brad. So, I first came here in 1972, believe it or not. I'm an Air Force brat. My father was in the military. I was born in Rapid City, South Dakota, at Ellsworth Air Force Base. But when I came here, I was on my way to school, and of course, it was a very small town, and for a teenager moving into a small town, having lived in places like Athens, Greece, and Cambridge, England, I was ready to leave after five minutes. Anyway, I went back down to Phoenix and went to school and got married and started my business and couldn't wait to get back to Prescott after all those years. So, I started my move back. It was a transition because I owned a company in Phoenix. I owned and operated a design-build firm there for 40 years, and of course, my son is down there. He's a firefighter with my three grandkids and his wonderful wife, but as we age, as you all know, it was really wonderful to look forward to coming back to Prescott. So, I did that, took a transition out of retirement. As I was retiring to get back up here, my father was ill and my mother needed help. So, I come back during the recession and started looking around downtown and started deciding that I was going to be bored, and I bought up a few of these historic properties in the downtown area. So, I've been really active for many years with the city through my involvement in trying to renovate the history, had a lot to do with the city. That's pretty much why I decided to run, because with a little frustrating experience, I realized after coming out of Phoenix that we needed a little help in our comm dev department, community development. So, anyway, got involved in that and have been on eight boards and commissions under four different mayors over the last many years. So, it's been a fun quest, if you will, and it's been enjoyable now to be on council because there were a few things that I wanted to set out to do, along with the historic preservation and, you know, protecting that for our tourism and our businesses downtown. I wanted to be sure that our community development department, in particular, the historic preservation department, was revamped, so I started getting very involved with that. Anyway, I guess I've got to stop. I'll tell you a little more later, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Chad DeVries, running for the four-year term. I moved to Arizona in 1991 in Cave Creek area, North Scottsdale. Raised five beautiful children down there. I currently have four grandchildren and a fifth on the way. I moved up here about six years ago. Used to bring my kids up here in the snow and shoot BB guns in the forest, pick up pinecones, fell in love with Prescott. I didn't like what was happening down to the valley with the growth and everything, and so I came up here and decided to call it home, like I said, almost six years ago. I was raised with traditional values. I'm a conservative, Republican family man and a local business owner. My daughter actually is the youngest business owner in town now. She owns a vintage candy store at 18 after graduating from Prescott High School. I have three other daughters attending, and so I know what's going on and the pulse of the town. I spend a lot of my time working with local charities. I'm the board chair for Fellowship of Christian Athletes. We got that started about two and a half years ago. We partnered up with the Wheelhouse Kids Sport Complex out in Prescott Valley and am an advisory board member. I do all the fundraising and I'm also a sponsor. I work with House of Hope on their second chair for their pledge fund for elderly, for housing for the elderly, with the vice mayor of Prescott Valley. I'm also a part of House of Hope, I'm a sponsor, and several other organizations. So, what I want to do is bring my leadership skills in those organizations and bring it to the city council. I also received in 2022 the Bloom Tree Realty Champions Don Schaefer Award. I was voted by my peers of the person who exemplifies integrity, gratitude, community, and service to others. So, I'm not a politician, I'm doing this as a public servant, and thank you very much.
Hi there, I'm Lois Freeworth. I was inspired to run because I worked for 34 years with Procter &amp; Gamble. I moved nine times all across the country in the Caribbean and met my husband along the way. I'm originally from the East Coast, my husband's from the West Coast, and we found ourselves in Cincinnati, Ohio, which was a fabulous place to live for half of our marriage, but we were not going to retire there. So, we used every family vacation to search the country. And we, in 2008, came back to Prescott, Arizona, and bought our land with a long-term plan to get here. You can tell I'm a planner because I spent 34 years in supply chain management, as well as business development with Procter &amp; Gamble. And so, we arrived finally in 2018 when my youngest son graduated high school. I was not about to move at senior in high school. And so, we came here in 2018, and I have been super involved in the community since then. I'm involved in education, both here in Prescott as well as down at the University of Arizona. I teach there every fall, I'm sorry, every spring, in supply chain management. And I've been super involved in local politics, and I've also been very involved in some community activities, campaigns, and other things. So, I look forward to spending more time with all of you, and you will see how my business background affects how I look at everything and how I assess everything and eventually make decisions. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ted Gamboge. I'm running for one of the four-year seats. My wife and I have lived here in Prescott just a little over 10 years. We both retired from Caterpillar. In my years here, I'm currently the chairman of the general plan, and I'm doing double duty because every time I come to a forum, I reach out to people and say, "Would you please fill out the survey for the general plan?" So, I'll have some copies afterwards for you. I'm the vice chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm on the Good Mayors Committee to rewrite the city charter. I've learned a lot in those experiences, and it was the motivation for me to run for city council. My campaign theme is "Come Together, Prescott," and the theme is the idea behind, regardless of where you are on an issue, we can find common ground, and that's how I'm going to campaign. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Hamer. I'm a resident of Prescott now for 17 years and in the U.S. for 50. I failed at one thing: I didn't manage to lose my accent. So, it's been a great 17 years here. My wife, Michelle, and I deliberately chose Prescott as the place to live as we came in from England after a five-year assignment in London. So, I've worked as an executive in many businesses around the materials world and the energy world for about 40 years now. I'm a businessman. I'm not a politician. But I saw here in Prescott a wonderful opportunity for us all. That's why we're here. And I saw also that I could help the city council operate better, both strategically as well as tactically. So, that's why I'm here, and I'm anxious to represent you in terms of the city council discussions and moving our city forward. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm council member Kathy Rusing, and I'm also a candidate for the four-year term. I'm wrapping up my fourth year as a council member, and it has been a very exciting, fulfilling, and challenging four years, and I am ready to serve you again. I have lived in Arizona since 1965, that's 58 years, and also have lived in Prescott for 37 years. In fact, I have a funny little story. We used to drive up from Phoenix to get out of the heat to come to Prescott in the summer in the '60s, and I remember driving through a little valley on the edge of Prescott, and there was a little sign out there saying "Lots for Sale" and a little trailer, and my mom used to laugh and say, "Who would want to live out here?" Well, as you know, that's now Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all our candidates. Appreciate the introductions. Well, let's jump into our first set of questions. The first topic is on traffic, and it centers around traffic and more specifically, the proposed Sun Dogs Ranch Road Connector. For background for our listeners, 25 years ago, the Prescott East Area Plan was approved by the city of Prescott, council members just like yourselves. The plan had a diverse citizen committee of stakeholders, including Yavapai Hills, the ranch, and open space advocates. Part of the plan set into motion the concept of the Sun Dog Connector. Over the past 25 years, area general plan and development agreements have been supported the concept of the Sun Dog Connector. Incumbent Rusing, do you support the vision and leadership of the past 25 years for the Sun Dogs Connector? Why or why not?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that a lot of things have changed in the last 25 years. Also, in 2020, we had an open space committee that identified Glassford Hill as something that we need to save. It's a very unique geological feature. It's an extinct volcano, and it became part of Save the Dells in our regional park that we're trying to develop right now. So, things have changed, and you can't have a regional park with a four-lane highway going through it. And as far as ecotourism, that's a much bigger economic driver for us than a road that would bypass our current commercial corridor on Highway 69. We currently get 30% of our sales tax revenue from that Highway 69 corridor. I'm talking about Lowe's, Trader Joe's, and Costco. And why would we want to bypass that? It'll be a very expensive road, and I prefer that we focus more on our growth corridor in the northern part of town between the airport and Prescott Valley, north of 89A. That's where all the economic activity is going to be happening. It's not going to be happening on the side of an extinct volcano. Thank you.
Candidate Gamboge, with our fire and medical responders also supporting the need for the Sun Dog Connector, do you support the road and feel this connector will help address the health and safety and emergency concerns? Why or why not?
Well, there are three elements to the Sun Dog Connector. One is safety. That involves traffic accidents that we currently have on 69 and the ability to get out of Prescott, at least the Prescott Valley. The second is economics. How much is it going to cost and what's the cost-benefit analysis? And the third is what I would describe as quality of life issues. There's wildlife there. Residents of Yavapai Hills really don't want the Sun Dog Connector. But I think there's a lesson to be learned from the Planning Commission. When the airport came for a runway extension, we had six meetings, and I can't remember how long each meeting was, but it was at least three to four hours. So, if four times six is 24 hours, it's hard-pressed to be able to give a concrete answer in two minutes of whether we support or don't support the Sun Dog Connector. I think those three issues of safety, economics, and quality of life need to be addressed in a more robust forum among a bigger group. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Candidate DeVry, as a councilperson, you will be asked to make tough decisions based on what is good for the entire community and not just a local minority. Explain what your decision-making process would be regarding the Sun Dog Connector and if you support it or not.
Again, I think it's a very difficult yes-or-no answer. I think there's a lot of different perspectives on it. I've been to the Simpo meetings. I've heard from the people from Yavapai Hills. I want to do more research on it. I think, as Ted said, safety is a big issue right now. I think there's other alternatives that they were looking at as far as utilizing the 89 and some expansion there, and we need to really come together and get everybody's input on it from the community and make sure it's the right thing to do. My understanding is even if they did approve it as of today, it would take five years, and we're probably looking 10 years out. I think, you know, there's a lot more studies. I think there's a lot more input from the community. And when I'm in council, I'm going to have my door open. I want people, I want to be transparent and make sure that everybody voices their concerns and make sure it's the best, if it did go through, to make sure it's right for the safety of the community. I know Yavapai Hills has a one-way in, one-way out, so there's some challenges there. There's some other developments that were approved before this previous council and the mayor. So, I don't think it's a yes-or-no question, but I think we need to be transparent, be open to the public, and figure out the best solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Good, do you support the vision of that leadership 25 years ago and the different development agreements that have occurred since in the Sun Dog Connector? Why or why not?
I've been serving on the Central Metropolitan Planning Organization for the last three years. I'm currently the secretary treasurer, so I've had a chance to look into this proposal very thoroughly. My biggest concern, I always use the phrase "qui bono." It's a Latin phrase that says, "Who benefits?" So, this connector would primarily benefit two major developers, both in the Storm Ranch and the Yavapai Hills Unit 9, and additionally, it would certainly benefit Prescott Valley. Because if the connector went through, we would be funneling large amounts of traffic into Prescott Valley's commercial core and bypassing a very primary tax-generating area, which is 69 through Frontier Village and into our resurrected mall, and also some of our major retail centers like Costco and Trader Joe's, et cetera. So, I think right now, my primary concern is making sure 69 is safe for additional traffic, and we've been awaiting 10 years, 10 years, for ADOT to finally turn the shovel and expand the bottleneck through Frontier Village. They're finally going to go out to bid later this year, and hopefully, we'll have finally a widening there in addition to a raised median to make sure that some of those head-on collisions that caused so much traffic are eliminated. So, I'm going to wait until that ADOT project is completed before we look into the future of what the Sun Dog Connector may or may provide.
Candidate Hamer, do you feel the Sun Dog Connector helps address the traffic concerns that currently exist, and would you support the idea of the road? Why or why not?
Thank you, Brad. Tough question to start with. The Sun Dog has been around for the 25 years that people have talked about. We do have a major safety problem with SR 69, so the mayor's absolutely right on that. The Sun Dog obviously would make a connection between Prescott and Prescott Valley, which bypasses a lot of the commerce on 69 within Prescott. That is not very desirable for us as a city. However, if it were to show that there are safety reasons for moving to the Sun Dog Connector because of the accidents on 69, then you'd have to take that into account. You know, there's a quality of life issue here as well. We have friends in Yavapai Hills, and we sit on their deck and we sip on a wine or two, and we tell great stories, or some of them are great anyway. They have a wonderful view over the valley going all the way to the Sun Dog Connector, so that quality of life piece is right there for us to address as well. Simpo has a study going on right now. I'm a great believer in terms of making a decision, you get the most data that you can relative to the subject that you're making a decision on. So, will, in fact, I would recommend getting the Simpo study, having the discussion at council, and then seeing where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Incumbent can tell me, do you support the road and fire and medical concerns regarding the connector's ability to allow for alternate routes for safety and emergency?
No, not right now. Oh, sorry. Hang on. Is this working? Okay, there we go. No, I don't think so right now. I think we have a more immediate need. The growth is going north, not necessarily that way. It is that way also, but when you talk about the need for safety right now, and we're at a 13-to-19-minute response time in the north area, I think we need to find a route getting north. That should be our most valuable and important concern at this moment. The Sun Dog, the argument that's been made to me about the Sun Dog is that it will alleviate traffic on 69. What is the point of alleviating traffic on 69 when you put a road through an area that could potentially hold 20,000 more homes when you go from the connector all the way towards Prescott Valley? I did a Yavapai County search online, who owns a lot of those properties on both sides of that Sun Dog? And as you approach closer to Prescott Valley, it's a lot of real estate people and some investors and some developers. So, my idea is if they're going to build that through, that's going to open that whole valley up for many more homes. So, isn't that going to negate the fact that they're telling us that we need that to take away some of the traffic on 69, but yet they're going to then start to develop that whole area in there? So, right now, that is not a priority to me, absolutely not. I think we have to find a way to the north Prescott area, and we need to do it quickly, along with those police and fire stations. That's where the need is. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Freeworth, will you please share with us your stance and your position regarding the Sun Dog Connector road?
Absolutely. So, as I mentioned earlier, being a businesswoman, I absolutely wouldn't make ever big decisions without having the latest updated data. And so, not having Simpo's data, I'm looking forward to seeing that. I project it's going to be a big pill that will be hard to swallow, but we need to see the data. The other thing that I do also is try and understand all the considerations that are in a decision-making set. And so, you know, some of the other candidates have mentioned some of them. I personally went in summer, I'm sorry, the fall of 2017 to Santa Rosa to help my sister dig through the ashes of her home for several days. So, anyone who's been in a big fire situation has concerns. Chief Dura has concerns of how would we get 40,000, 48,000 people out of Prescott proper and heading east or heading north? So, I definitely have that in my consideration set, as well as I've been stuck also in several of those Highway 69 accidents. So, we need some alternatives. The other one for me is there's a lot of excitement right now about this regional park, and multiple cities and entities have put up the money to go about buying the land, and so people want to see that it may be preserved. I also hear from the Yavapai Hills folks. They're very clear, not only about the noise and the lack of beauty, but also the real concern on their property values if a major highway is to go through their backyard. But I also have respect for the builders who have bought these development agreements. If they are to develop, then they deserve to have basic service of a road from the city. Does it need to go from end to end? Maybe not. And then, finally, for me, I'm waiting to see how the master plan projections pull out for our population. Again, I'm very concerned that we should have been working on local roads a long time ago because right now, we don't have enough roads. Anyone who drives on Willow Creek knows how scary it is. So, we have to do things to try and figure out how we're going to disperse our population and not have to fill up our roads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, good job. Well done. The first question is behind you, so hopefully, you're all warmed up. We're going to move the second question, is going to be focused around economic development. So, for the second question, we would like to hear from each of you on what you feel is the biggest threat to the greater economic development viability that the Prescott is running into and why? We're going to start with candidate Hamer. Do you feel that there is a threat to the economic development viability, and if so, what do you think that threat is?
Thank you. Yeah, economic development is one of those departments in the city that's underneath where tourism is right now. That's a distinct disadvantage in terms of what we have for economic development. We desperately need economic development to diversify our tax base going forward. So, I think this question is really one about what sort of economic development do you want? Do you want to wait until somebody comes into town, or do you want to go out and get those companies which would really contribute to our town and the quality of life and the younger generations here in town as well? So, I'm very much on us being more proactive in terms of economic development. I had a friend the other day from Orange County tell me he knew of 12 firms out there which were small, growth-oriented, technologically-based companies that he felt would be a perfect fit for Prescott here. And I've got to agree that to go out and target people like that and small companies like that with a good environmental footprint and a relatively small usage of space, that these are the companies that we want in town, and we should plan to bring them in. Thank you.
Candidate Gamboge, share your thoughts with the voters on the overall health of Prescott's economic viability and if there are any concerns that you see.
Well, here's a news flash. We have 11 really smart people in Prescott working on a general plan, and we started in 2022, and we won't finish until 2025. And so, we'll be touching on those elements, and I think the important thing with economic growth is that we don't treat it as a standalone issue. It goes hand-in-hand with how much water do we have, what's the traffic on our streets. Those are the important issues that we need to wrestle with. And if I use my math from the Planning Commission, where we spent six meetings at four hours each, in the general plan where we come up with this overall strategic plan for Prescott, we're going to spend three years with 11 people, and I think that'll do a lot better job than trying to answer your question in two minutes, but that's my best answer.
Thank you. And it's for the voters, so they know which issues align with them. So, try to do your best. I encourage all the candidates. Incumbent Rusing, please tell us your thoughts on what the biggest threat may be to the economic viability of the city and why?
Thank you. Prescott, Arizona is the economic driver for all of Yavapai County, and Yavapai County is the fourth-most populous- is the fourth most populous county in all of the state. First you have Maricopa, then you have Pinale, and then you have Pima, and then you have Yavapai County. So we are the economic driver. We have the only airport that has commercial jet service. Nobody else in Yavapai County has that. So that's just one example of the airport being an economic driver. We've developed an industrial area around it, an industrial park. We just sold some property to the FedEx Distribution Center, and we plan on developing more of the areas around the airport for public safety, actually, because they are in the crash zones, and we need to move the residential developments further north and out of the crash zones. But first of all, I'd like to thank all the contractors and subs who are here, because you are the backbone of our economy. It's nothing fancy, it's nothing complicated, but I just wanted to thank you for keeping our sales tax base strong during COVID, because all of our other city services, like restaurants, for example, retail dropped, but construction was going gangbusters. So I just wanted to thank all of you. We need to stick to the basics. We need, the city needs to stay out of debt. We need to keep our taxes low. For example, our tax rate is now 8.35%, whereas if you go to Prescott Valley, it's 9.18%. So we just did have a small increase in our property taxes to put five cops back on the street for the cost of what two steaks would be if you bought them at Safeway. Thank you.
Candidate Freworth, do you feel this city has any threats to its economic development viability?
You know, that's interesting, because I've been focused primarily on, you know, some of the things that we wanna see in terms of diversifying our tax base, but nobody's ever asked us yet clearly about barriers. And so there's a few things in my mind. When you, first off, every city needs to be focused on public safety, and we have kind of slipped there in the last 30 years. And so when we're talking about our economic development being north, north of the airport, we have no fire service up there, we have no police service up there, and our citizens that moved in the north side of town weren't expecting to arrive and become second-class citizens. So I think the focus that is beginning now by this city council and the next city council to really put the pedal down on public safety and do the kind of investments we need will be a help. The second focus for me really is, and I've actually talked about this with some city councilmen from some of the other areas, I believe when you have a department that's focused on tourism, and we so need the tourism of those tax dollars, that what doesn't end up getting prioritized is this next harder step of economic development, the second task. So I think not only should we be focused on it as a Prescott leadership team, but I actually think it's a great regional opportunity. I believe, you know, a rising tide floats all ships, and I know not only us, but Prescott Valley and Chino Valley could all benefit for some economic development. So let's put our resources together, and let's go sell. And then the third one for me is, that I think is a barrier, honestly, is our education system here. I believe that we don't have the kind of academic excellence that companies would be looking for to bring their employees or transfer here. And so I really do think that we need to focus our proficiency scores, and made a big focus of trying to get people that wanna focus on that on our school boards. And so if the whole community supports the effort to improve our public schools, we will do better in economic development.
Thank you. Incumbent can tell me, do you feel, what do you feel is the biggest threat to our economic viability?
You know, I'm gonna speak about this in two general areas. So we've got the bigger picture for Prescott at large, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about something that's closer to home for us, which is our downtown businesses. So the bigger picture is, we do have an economic development department, and we've got two, what I would call wonderful ladies, but they're millennials in that department. And I was, when I was on-boarded, I had the privilege of sitting down for them and giving them, having them give me an onboarding tour of what they were doing, and it was very impressive. It was unlike anything we've had in the past. Many years ago, I served on the Economic Development Committee at the city, and we didn't have anything like that. That was probably about 10 years ago. We do have that now. And one of the things that stuck out in my mind, what they're doing right now, is they're being very, very mindful and careful of the businesses that they do attract to our city. Not everything is gonna work here. We want something that has low water use. We want something that has a small footprint, doesn't take us over. One of the things I'm personally witnessing is a buildup in the technology area. So we've got, like somebody down here said about the pads out at the airport, they're being purchased at a very alarming rate right now. It's actually a good thing, though. It's a lot of tech coming here. It's building on itself. As you know, we have Center for the Future, which is an incubator, kind of an incubator business, I guess. It's modeled off of Sky Song out in Tempe, which was wildly successful. They now have 137 young startup employees with that company. So the man who runs that, Dr. Haas, he's in cybersecurity, and as you know, we have 500,000 jobs in cybersecurity that we're missing in this country. So I see where this is gonna grow. Now, just real quickly, down on the local level, the biggest thing for economic development, having been a business owner downtown for many years, is safety. 70% of those businesses are owned by women. They want safety. That brings me back to public service. We've gotta beef that up, and we've gotta make sure that our downtown is clean and safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Good, we're gonna reframe the question a little bit for you, because you're the mayor, and you can handle it. If single-family residential development cannot get through the public process for approvals, do you feel that the lack of housing to be a threat to our economic development viability?
Well, that was one of the components I was gonna bring up in my answer originally. Of course, we have some of these high-tech developments and some really substantial aerospace and other businesses locating out in the airpark southeast of the airport. But when you look at the primary driver of our national economy and our local economy, it's small business. And that's, I speak to business owners all the time, that their biggest challenge is being able to find reliable hourly workers that can show up every day and get the job done for their business. And it's becoming more and more difficult for hourly workers to be able to find housing in our city. So that's why I helped form the Workforce Housing Committee that is now meeting to look at different options that we may be able to utilize within the city to create more lower-cost but substantial housing availability for hourly workers. You can bring in all the new businesses you want, but if they don't have the hourly employees to be able to show up, they're not gonna be successful. And we've seen a substantial increase in the cost of housing in our city. Five years ago, the average permit was about $338,000 per permitted home. Now it's $466,000. So clearly, hourly employees are never gonna be able to afford a new home, but if we can put together some modular homes, smaller homes, maybe reduce some of the permitting to be able to put some lower-cost housing in, then we can attract and keep hourly workers that'll really support that segment of our economy.
Thank you. Candidate DeVree, please let us know your thoughts on the overall health of the economic development for current employers and businesses in the community.
Thank you for that question. I'm actually a business owner. I have, my office is at Bashford Courts in downtown, and my daughter's business is as well, and several of my friends have businesses. You know, there's some businesses, the restaurants and stuff seem to be healthy. In my building alone, I've seen over the last two and a half years, I don't know, probably seven to eight businesses closed down, unfortunately. You know, we obviously went through COVID and things like that. I really believe in an economic development plan. Like Mr. Hamer said, we need to reach out to companies. I spoke to Robin out at the airport, and we have those pads out there that, speaking to Embry-Riddle kids and, you know, kids to me, but adults or whatever at Yavapai College, they really wanna stay here, but we have no way of keeping them here, because there's not high-paying jobs. One of the things Mayor Good just said is about what they call, and PB's working on it a lot too, is attainable housing. I think if we can't bring in housing for, you know, these adults that are coming out of college, I think that's a big problem. I know we've started, I know they started a committee on that. We just, I know they approved us seven modular homes at one of the schools at a $2.5 million price tag, which I think is very expensive for five teachers, one firefighter, and one police officer. I think working on some of this attainable housing, affordable housing, whatever you call it, is a must. I believe, let's see, I think we're great on tourism, and especially the rodeo. I know that's a big hot topic right now, and I think that brings in a lot of tourism dollars for us and keeps our businesses healthy in town, so. But as far as an economic development plan, I think we really need to work hard on that. We need to reach out to companies from other states and make sure that we show them what a beautiful place Prescott is. We got trails, we got mountains, we got lakes, we got all this stuff. You know, the schools, we gotta work on that, and I agree with Lois on that. But you know what? Prescott is one place on the planet. I'll live here, I'll die here, and I think we need to share that with others and keep our community going. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. You completed the second question. Our third question is gonna be focused around open space. Using taxpayer money to buy open space is a contentious topic in our community. With limited public dollars, some would argue that public money should be spent on essential public services such as infrastructure, roads, police, and fire. There is another argument that says public dollars should be used for purchasing open space to prevent further development. And then a third approach, which accepts the purchase of open space with public dollars only if the voters specifically vote on and for the purchase and approval of that acquisition. We're gonna start with incumbent can tell me. The city of Prescott recently entered into an agreement to purchase open space, buy an portion of Glassford Hill, along with the county and Prescott Valley, to prevent or limit development. Would you support a similar transaction to purchase land around the airport to prevent development? Why or why not?
Well, that is actually, in my mind, a completely different topic. The development around the airport that we are currently trying to acquire is land that was sold for development at the end of the runways. So we're actually in negotiations currently. So that I would think of differently. The open space that they refer to is open space that has a purpose. It's a place where an airplane crashes. So those are impact zones that we are working on. Although it has been spoken about in the paper as open space, it is in fact open space, but it's not exactly what I think you're getting at, like the acquisition of the Dells, the acquisition of Glassford.
So let me, I think the point is taxpayers' dollars being used to spend, to buy land for whatever purpose, whether it's open space or for the runway, is it an appropriate use for taxpayer dollars?
If it has something to do with health, safety, and welfare, yes. Those tax dollars, and we have a right to do that, to spend that on that. If it's a purchase of just a piece of open land, no. I think there's other things that we need to prioritize to make sure that we get the things that we need first. Now, the purchase of the Dells, that was an iconic symbol for Prescott. We were very lucky to be able to get that open space and Glassford Hill for the park. But no, just to purchase open space for the sake of purchasing open space, we have way too many bigger fish to fry right now, and I think our taxpayer dollars have to go where it's important. So my priority list would not be for open space at this particular time. In fact, I can't really see anybody that's been arguing for open space. If we talk to them about things that we've just discussed, our response time, our firemen, $600,000 last year in overtime for our firemen, the policemen are stretched beyond. Would you rather open, you know, buy a piece of open ranch land, or would you rather take care of our police and fire? So I think it's a, for me, it's a question of priority, again, in terms of the open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate DeVree, there is discussion that the city may enter into purchasing land around the airport to prevent development, for which land that is already entitled and the property rights are there to develop. Would you support such an acquisition?
I'm in belief of property rights, but I also believe in safety. I've talked to several of the neighbors in the area. A lot of people aren't happy with what's going on in the airport, with the extension of the runway, which is gonna actually alleviate some noise. But again, if, you know, the original development agreements had that in there, and there was some trade-off and stuff, and I think that we have to look at property rights and figure it out from there. Also, in that original, that development agreement, we were supposed to get, I think it was from the last mayor and last council, so we were supposed to get that 50 acres in the development agreement, which was not included, and there's a little footnote. So we kinda missed on that. Now we're kinda trying to go back and get it. I think these development agreements need to be, you know, really looked at in the future. I believe that the voters should have a right to say in it, it's public money, it's public dollars. And I believe in the Dells is a great, like county said, about purchasing that, but if it's just raw land and stuff out there, you know, we haven't had a police station, or a fire station out there. The one at the airport should be demolished, and for safety and police, and we have a 911 problem. But I think any, anything that's of the substantial dollars should have public opinion and public vote. And so as far as around the airport, I think that's a spot for economic development, and I think we have to honor people's property rights, as long as it's within the agreements that have already been made, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Freworth, with 86% of the state of Arizona being in some form of public lands, national forest, state land, BLM, do you feel the voters should be asked to vote on any future land acquisitions to prevent development?
That's a different twist. Well, first let me start with, I believe that we have done an amazing job here in Prescott in the last few years of saving our historic and beautiful granite Dells. And as a newcomer to the council, I will honor all previous agreements that my predecessors would have done. So in the case of the IGA that is in place between multiple governments about the Glassford Hills Regional Park, I will honor that. But I do think first and foremost, you know, as you see my rack card, we are woefully behind in public safety and infrastructure, and that's where our money needs to go. That's what the taxpayers and the citizens told me as I was out gathering signatures all over the winter months here in Prescott. You wanted, that's where you wanted the investment. I did not hear beyond the regional park, I did not hear the public talking about investing in open space. And I think we're gonna be in some challenging economic times in the years ahead, and so I think we have to play catch-up in the areas that the voters have told us they want. So I don't know if I answered your question with the twist, but I hope I did. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Good, once again, do you support a plan for the city to purchase substantial parcels of land for open space to either prevent or slow growth? And would you go so far as to support raising taxes to make that happen, whether they be sales tax or property taxes, to cover either open space or essential services?
Well, we had a tax initiative here in this city that was designed to be able to improve roads and acquire open space. First of all, I think that's very bad tax policy when you try to solve two problems with one tax initiative. And it created a lot of antagonism between the proponents of more open space and the proponents of having better roads. But one thing we saw from that is sometimes if somebody wants to sell open space property, all of a sudden the price doubles or triples, because they know the government is willing to buy it. So I think open space acquisition has to be very strategic. If it supports one of our major economic drivers here in this city, which is ecotourism, acquiring some of the land in the Dells with the Arizona Eco-Development Agreement, I think was strategically valuable. I think also the Glassford Dells Regional Park is gonna be a big attraction for more tourism and ecotourism visitors that generate more economic activity and tax for the city. But just buying open space for the sense of buying open space, I think is a bad idea. It takes the land off the tax rolls, and this state only has 84% is government-owned and about 16% is privately owned. So when you take it off the tax rolls, you're limiting your future to have any future economic drivers. So it's gotta be very strategic, and I know around the airport, some of the problems that were generated from the agreement there put some high-risk areas, because open space near the ends of the runway were not protected. And here, a year ago last May, we had a crash for a fully-fueled private plane that crashed, but fortunately, there was open space for the land. So we have to protect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Incumbent Rusin, given Prescott's proximity to the Prescott National Forest... Given Prescott's proximity to the Prescott National Forest and an abundance of other public lands and parks, would you spend public doc, dollars to purchase additional open space in the city of Prescott to prevent future growth?
Well, first of all, I just wanna say, no one's preventing development. What we're trying to do is manage development in such a way that we have development that values our town, and I support sustainable, well-managed growth that respects our values and values our town of Prescott. I just wanna say, an annexation is not about private property rights. When a developer comes to us with a tract of raw county dirt with no water, no services, and he wants to be annexed, and we say, okay, sure, we'll annex you, but what do you offer us in return for increasing your value of your property overnight without turning a spade full of dirt just by getting annexed into the city of Prescott? Because it's the city of Prescott taxpayers that are gonna be, be providing you with all the infrastructure to make, enable you to make a whole heck of a lot of money. So it's actually a negotiation, and we need to create a nexus. So what do the taxpayers get in return? We are asking for meaningful, open space, and that's what happened with the AED, uh, Dells annexation. We negotiated a nice tract of property, 500 acres, and in the heart of the Dells. And let me tell you something, when developers start about, talking about their private property rights, they sign a form in every development agreement, Prop 207, where they waive their private property rights so that they can, in order, in order for them to be annexed into communities. So I am not preventing any development, it's nothing but a negotiation and protecting the rights of the taxpayers. Plus, in 2020, the tax initiative, I'm a fiscal conservative, I never vote for a tax increase, but I said, hey, this is great, I support open space, I support roads. Unfortunately, there was no percentage, uh, laid out, and it all went to roads. Thank you.
Candidate Gambogi. Please let the voters know your position on whether to use public money for the purchase of open space or spending on infrastructure, roads, police and fire.
I think if you look at the rack cards of every candidate here, they all talk about supporting basic services. When I talk to the police chief, Amy, she needs a new police station, she's hiring five new police officers, and she's training at the cost of a hundred thousand dollars each. If you talk to, uh, Holger Dur, he's hiring three firemen, he needs three fire stations. Some of the other candidates have talked about that before. We have an ongoing Hatfield McCoy argument over water in this city, that's part of the basic services. So to me, if you wanna bring out an old corporate term of zero-based budgeting, you gotta do the basics before you do anything else. And I'm gonna answer this question by answering the previous question when they talked about the threat to economic development. I think a discussion like this is an example of a threat to economic development because we say we're gonna support basic services, and then we get off into the discussion of open space. And the earlier question about open space at Glassford Hill and quote, "open space at the airport" are two completely different topics. In the 2015 general plan, the airport was completely protected. In the 20, and, and in 2017, it went before the planning commission, our current mayor voted against it, it went for the city council and they changed the deal. So in six meetings, in two executive sessions, the words, "open space" never came up at the airport. They're two diff, they're apples and oranges.
Thank you. I think it's still taxpayer dollars that are used to purchase the land. And candidate Hamer. Would you support or entertain the purchase of land to prevent development around the airport, and that land is already currently fully entitled with water rights and development rights? Please explain your answer.
Yeah, Brad, thank you. Um, I, I'm gonna take it back a little bit. I think one of the things that we get wrong here in the city today is that we don't have a strong strategic plan, we don't have a general plan which is up to date, and in fact, it will take three years to develop a general plan. A lot of these issues, especially this one, should be addressed within those plans. They should be addressed as issues that need taxpayer dollars or don't need taxpayer dollars. So how do you in fact compare land at the airport, land in the Dells, land for the regional parks, money for fire stations, police stations, et cetera? Well, this isn't a new problem. There is a, a technique out there which is used called capital investment portfolios. So you in fact get a sense of our shareholders, the citizens, in terms of what they want their taxpayer dollars to go for, and then you come up with a portfolio of investments, which are those that everybody has talked about here. How do you judge them, though? Is it solely on a dollar return? I would suggest not. I would suggest you include quality of life, you include safety, as a really big one there, you include the subject to property rights around the individual investment, and you would include natural beauty as well. So we need to up our game in terms of business processes and to have an investment portfolio where this is well-considered and investments can be compared against each other. Thank you.
Thank you. For our fourth question, we're gonna change the tone a little bit, hopefully for the better. Everybody's gonna get the exact same question. You'll have two minutes to answer the question. So here is the question, and if any of you want me to repeat it before you go, I will, but it's pretty simple. The city currently operates about a $250 million budget, plus or minus, annually. Please share with the voters what in your past makes you the best candidate to ensure the money is spent wisely each year? And with this, we'll start with Mayor Good, and we're gonna go my left to right, your right to left.
Well, first of all, I've been working on the city budget here for six years, both as a, uh, city councilman and as your current mayor, so having a pretty good understanding of all the components of our city budget, whether they're enterprise funds that can't be, um, commingled, or they're not fungible and can be moved from one fund to another, uh, being able to manage our, um, general fund, which is the primary source for all of our public safety, police, fire, et cetera, uh, knowing how each one of those components work and how we can manage them is, uh, critically important. Uh, in my professional career, I spent 35 years in senior healthcare management with five major corporations and handled staff of hundreds of people along with budgets of, uh, 250 to nearly a million dollars. So I have a long-term experience being able to look at how best to manage, uh, budgets and make sure that they're focused on creating and achieving the goals that you put together. Um, we do have a strategic planning workshop that we have every single year so that we can set our priorities, identify the costs, and then figure out how best we're gonna fund and we're gonna be able to generate the priorities that we have, both in capital improvements, operations, and in other areas. So I think, uh, I'm pretty proud of the fact, we've never run a deficit, uh, we're not allowed to run a deficit, and, uh, we continue to ratchet down our debts, and we have a fully-funded pension system now. So I think there's a lot to be proud of, and I think my experience leading the city from a budget perspective, um, I'm quite proud of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, councilperson can tell me.
Councilwoman? Is this thing working? There we go. Um, you know, I too have gone through this budget. In my 40 years of running a company, budget was the number one thing we have to be always aware of, and if you look at the breakdown in our budget, 73% of this money goes to our services. We've had, um, this city owns a lot of services, let me tell you. We have, how many small cities, around 45,000 people owns an airport? We own a golf course. All the things that we own, we have to pay for that, and we have relatively low taxes in order to pay for that. But we also, we are in a, a state of deferred maintenance in many of those areas, and we're right now scrambling to try to rectify that situation. So, um, the budget is very important, every single thing has to be analyzed and prioritized, and I think Mark Woodfill's been doing a very good job. We just went through, I think, six hours of budget talks with our, with our controller, Mark, Mark Woodfall, Woodfill, very, very detailed, and I think you'd be interested to know how much money goes into those areas. In fact, I found out that 9% of your money goes into recreation, to take care of the parks and the trails. That is also a large amount of money for a community of our size. So we pay for a lot of things. The budget is working, there are some areas that we need to kick it up in. Um, this little tiny, you know, it's, you, you get to move one step forward and two step forward, two back. We've got some, Katie Hobbs is getting ready to pass a bill so that the rental tax goes away. Well, that's gonna hurt us, that's gonna take $2 million out of our budget when that tax goes away. So we're gonna be scrambling to look at where we can make that money up. A million of that comes out of our roads, which distresses me. So the budget is something worth looking at, all of you need to take a look and find out where this goes, but right now in my mind, everything has to go towards services. We, we need our police and fire badly. Thanks.
Candidate DeVries. Question? The city currently operates about a $250 million annual budget. Please share with the voters what in your past makes you the best candidate to ensure the money is spent wisely?
Well, I've worked for myself ever since I could, uh, work, um, so being a business owner, budgeting is everything. Um, I'm a fiscal conservative, I think, you know, having over a $250 million budget, but we don't, we also don't talk about our 150 million in debt either. So I think we need to sharpen our pencils. Um, I think in any business, you can trim at least 5% of the fat off the budget. I think we just gotta get down and dirty and get into the budget and, and look at doing and making sure that the budget is accurate and that, uh, we, we can trim some things off of that. Um, you know, we've got a 15.5% increase in the budget, but we also have a 5.6%, I think it's close to that, where they reduce the capital improvements, which is kinda, you know, that's scary when we need more money for police, fire and safety. So I think there's modernization we can do with, um, things, um, to, to, uh, look at new technologies and stuff to where we can really keep track of what we're spending our money on, so, um, those are my concerns, and like I said, I think we can do a trim at least 5% of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Freworth.
Yes, as I brought up earlier, um, with 34 years in Procter &amp; Gamble and supply chain, at the age of 26, I managed personally a $25 million transportation budget for all of our paper mills in the Midwest, shipping U-Bounty and Charmin. Um, and so I've been managing large budgets for a really long time. I was responsible for our $7 billion in sales supply chain to Walmart and Sam's all across the country. So big budgets are not new to me. Um, it does come down to strategic planning skills, um, as well as, uh, not only budget management skills, but also contract oversight skills. You think you're signed for something, and if you don't actually manage the details, all of a sudden extra costs, losses and waste comes in. So I have read lots and lots of fine print and contracts over my 34 years in corporate America. Um, what I do see as an opportunity, um, again, because I am a fiscal conservative, is how do we find, um, something we used to do in corporate America all the time of loss analysis? And how do we find waste? So something right now, maybe 10 year that we spend today and it's valuable today, 5, 10, 15 years from now, is no longer needed. Times have changed, and yet people repeat things and they keep doing things again and again, and we call those losses or waste of what you would think about. Think about how you manage your own family budget and how that's changed over the course of time. So while I do agree sometimes you can find 5%, other times you can't, but I have never seen you not find something. And so for me, loss analysis is something that I think are some business skills we could bring to city budget planning. Um, when everyone is responsible for finding cost savings, no one finds cost savings. So I would like to see, because your day job eats you alive. So what I would like to see is maybe making an investment in that space, it always pays back literally 20 times what you spent in one person working on this full-time. So whether it's one, two or three, I don't know enough yet, but I would bring that thought process in the future.
Candidate Gambogi.
Could you repeat the question?
The city currently operates about a $250 million annual budget. Please share with the voters what in your past makes you the best candidate to ensure the money is spent wisely?
Well, as an executive caterpillar, uh, we had to run a budget every year. Earlier I mentioned the term zero-base budgeting, that's where nothing is sacred, nothing gets grandfathered, you're working on the objectives. And we were, uh, annually able to cut stuff out of the budget to do the new things that we wanted to do. So we didn't add, we horse traded in the budget. But there was a time, I, I was a prodigal son, and I left Caterpillar to become a vice president of a big market research company, and one of our clients was an $8 million client, and when I went over to introduce myself, they handed me a 90-day notice and said, you're about, the, the company's about to get fired. 60 days later, they tore up the 90-day notice, because what I'd learned is we were doing everything that the client asked us to do, but we weren't keeping track of the budget, and the expenses were getting out of hand, and, and the client wasn't happy with it. That involved going deep, uh, doing a deep dive into the budget to see what was going on. We were able to get the staff together, we had a more formalized meeting process, we had agendas, and, uh, in 60 days, we cleared that budget. Later, when I, we turned to Caterpillar, uh, I was responsible for deploying sales funnel management as part of customer relation management worldwide, and that was a huge multibillion-dollar project, and we watched our money so that we could make it successful because it had it operate at every dealer around the world.
Thank you. Candidate Hamer.
Thank you. Yes, I have several qualifications here. I've, uh, run businesses from being as small as $5 million a year up to $500 million a year. And when I say I've run the business, it's every functional element of that business included in the profit and loss statement. It's not just sales, it's not just marketing, it's manufacturing, it's technology, it's all those people as well, which is a very important part of this whole equation. So best practices out there right now, including in cities, are that we should have continuous improvement programs in terms of our overall expenses, whether they be operating expenses or capital expenses. We should also have an operational excellence program, which actually takes all the operations individually, splits them down into the individual activity in the operation, and budgets against the opportunity. We should also have business process management, which is fundamental in terms of businesses. We go to any city in the valley, Mesa, Cave Creek, et cetera, they have business process management and we don't. So recently, I've been doing due diligence on companies around the world. One in Beaumont, California, we did a financial due diligence as well as an operational due diligence, and that was for the private equity firm, Apollo Management, one of the biggest equity houses out there. Thank you. Those are my qualifications, by the way.
Thank you. Incumbent Rusin.
Thank you. Both of my parents are children that grew up in the depression. They were very poor, very rural, but you know what? This is America, and they didn't think of themselves as disadvantaged. In fact, I still have my grandmother's hammer that I keep in the living room to remind me of all the hardships she endured. It's an old rusty hammer, it's not even a proper store-bought hammer, it was made with a handle from a piece of pipe. It was made with a handle from a piece of pipe. And I grew up with those stories. And my parents passed those stories down to me and instilled to me that hard work, living below your means, paying cash, staying out of debt, and working hard is what you need to do to be successful. And I continue to apply those principles into my daily chores down at City Hall. For example, originally, all the developers were allowed to put in plastic PVC pipe water mains. And we were having water main breaks all over town, wasting hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, flooding people's houses. And it was costing you, the taxpayer, to fix all these water mains in streets. But you know what? I got together with our mayor, he wasn't the mayor at the time, we were just mere city council people, and our public works department. And we got a code change where now the developers of subdivisions, they have to put in ductile iron water mains that last 90 years instead of 20 or 30. And we are saving future taxpayers millions of dollars in saved money in repairs. So that's just one example of things I look to every day. How can we save money? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've made it to the final question. So you're on the home stretch. You're all doing a great job, and we appreciate your input tonight. The city of Prescott is largely here because of the foresight of our forefathers, ranchers, ranchers slash developers, who welcomed others to enjoy this beautiful place we get to call home. Now it seems those same individuals are being chastised and even sometimes dehumanized for the same reason that allowed all of us to reside here today. Candidate DeVry. Do you think the city, it is in the city's best interest to work with landowners, developers on thoughtful design? Or would you rather see the growth that is coming to our area be developed in the county in what is referred to commonly as Wildcat Development?
I think as far as the people that have been here, Prescottonians, I am into property rights, but I think there also has to be good design. Some of the things I've seen lately, I would have to say that look like they're coming from Scottsdale and things like that. But I am, I'm not against development, but I am against smart, sustainable development. And obviously, with our new water allocation, that has to be thought of as well. So what was the second part of that question? About Wildcat?
It was, would you work with landowners in design? And then the second half was, or would you rather see the development that's coming be in the county in what is called Wildcat Development?
I'd rather work with them on design. I think that's, you know, as long as they have their property rights and they're within their zoning. So yes.
Thank you. Candidate Hamer? Is it realistic today to shut the doors on others wanting to relocate to Prescott for a better life?
No. But if I could add to that?
You may.
Thank you, Brad. Well, you know, lots of people say to you out there in the 2,000 people I've visited in the last six months here, "Shut the door. I got in, everything's fine. We'll go on from here." This is clearly not a sustainable attitude in terms of what we have here and what we want here. So work with developers? Absolutely. They're a stakeholder in terms of what we're doing. But let's not be a very milquetoast approach with developers. We are strong as a city, and we should be negotiating on an equal basis in terms of all things that happen in the city here. So yes, I'd work with developers. I'd worked with constructors. I think we have to have a sustainable city going forward, sustainable in all aspects. And one of the key ones, of course, is getting young people into the equation here. How can we survive as a city if our average age is 60 and our lifeblood is young people? So yes, I'd work with developers. Let me just say one other thing, and I understand I'm going to run over here, and I apologize. We've got a pipeline of developments out there. Some of them contracted, some of them thought through, some of them not so well planned. We need to have that pipeline understood by everybody in the community as to what's in there and what's coming. Alongside that pipeline, we need to look at the infrastructure required to support that before those developments go in, not after. And that's the game of catch-up we're playing right now.
Thank you very much.
Finally, water is a part of that infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Incumbent Rusin?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I took a breath. What type of relationship would you like to see the council establish with our local area developers?
I think that we need to have a relationship where we have a level playing field, okay? Our previous councils were extremely developer-friendly. And you can tell that by looking at, unfortunately, all of our ironclad development agreements that are very one-sided. They're very favorable to the developer. Developers are hard-nosed, very smart businessmen. They're not doing anything illegal. But we need to level the playing field and make sure that we don't sell Prescott short. So one way that we manage growth is with our new water management policy. The minute Mayor Good was elected, he started working with the council, and we crafted a new water policy that manages growth. Because as you know, water manages growth, and there's three aspects to it. Number one, you only get city water if you are being annexed. So in order, we only look at strategic annexations now that are going to get water. And then we have a water budget, residential and commercial. And then also, we also will no longer make water improvement districts with private property owners. We only will start making water improvement districts with other governmental entities because it was promoting urban sprawl, and we were potentially going to water up all the raw land in Yavapai County. And that's not fair to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gambogi? With the animosity that is currently shown towards our developers and our city's need to obtain affordable housing, do you feel this current attitude may somehow backfire on the community?
Absolutely. These issues are not single issues. So if there's a perceived animosity between developers and people that want open space, that's, you're taking sides. And when you take sides, you can't solve problems. If you're going to solve problems, you need to find some common ground. And that's why the campaign theme, "Come Together, Prescott." There are solutions out there, but they're not these individual, single issues. It's related to water, it's related to growth, it's related to traffic. What we haven't touched on is the fact that we're surrounded by a national forest. And Prescott is an island. We're 40 miles from an interstate. So our situation needs a comprehensive general plan to look at all these issues. If we don't, we'll be here 10 years from now arguing about the same issues. So the way to do that is to find common ground. We did that at the airport on the planning commission. We did it on the general plan. We can do it on just about anything we have. Find common ground, come together. And then the areas where we differ tend to be minor issues, and we can resolve them in a cordial manner where there is no animosity anymore.
Thank you. Mayor Good? You're about to wrap up your second year as mayor. Please share with us how you feel your leadership and policies have contributed towards welcoming others to this great place we get to call home?
First of all, I'm so proud to be able to be the leader in this community for our city council and our future. I ran on five primary issues when I ran for the mayor position, one of which was more transparency and being able to create a call to the public. I think we saw it last night when we had a full council chamber talking about the conditions of the rodeo and other really important issues that a lot of people were very concerned about. But we were able to allow a lot of input. And I think at the end of that meeting, we found a lot of common ground that I think is going to allow us to move forward. But transparency and public input was limited before, and I think it's much more legitimate now, and people do have access to the council. I also said that we needed to slow down development, not stop it. But we have an obligation to make sure that we provide the public safety to every resident in our community. We can't have 15- or 17-minute response times when 911 is called. Before I came on council, we were around seven- or eight-minute response times. And we have an obligation to make every citizen in the city safe. So we have to manage that growth in a manner that we maintain safety. I also said that we would increase our veterans outreach services, which I have with the Veterans Commission that I established, and being able to provide, I think, cooperative relationships with developers. We've got a couple of developers here that really take their development seriously in the sense that it provides what we expect from developers and not necessarily the developers that want to make the most money in the fastest possible way and then have the taxpayers and the citizens have to deal with the consequences. So those are areas that I'm quite proud of, and I expect to continue in those areas in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Frueworth? Do you feel the current environment that has been created, some from elected officials, some from the community, and even some from developers, is healthy? Or do you think it should change? And please explain.
You know, what I love about this town, and you hear it all the time being out with the public, is how much everyone loves this community. And so when you focus, like we just saw yesterday in City Hall, of bringing everyone's love for this community together and finding common ground and win-win solutions, we move forward. And so to come back to your original question about specifically developers and growth. You know, I take a look at, and I've come from lots of other places in the country that didn't have the water challenges we have here. And when everyone, regardless if you're in the city of Prescott, the town of Prescott Valley, or you're a Wildcat Development or out in the county, we're all have got our straws in that aquifer. And what we know is that private wells are failing throughout the community. So the aquifer's dropping. And as politicians, we can enjoy our four years and kick, kick, kick that can down the road, but the situation is getting worse. And all I know is when I was working with Walmart, when you come from, and I agree with some of the comments about level playing fields, when you come to the table as an equal partner and you treat everyone else around the table as an equal partner, we start finding breakthrough solutions. And so when I take a look at our challenges, especially in the area of water, thoughtful design is a perfect term. You know, we see other parts of Arizona and other states where developers are coming to the table and giving us water-neutral developments, that we are harvesting as much stormwater and reusing water as we are using water. And so those are the kind of challenges. I don't have those expertise areas, but our developers do. And if we brought people to the table with looking for a new economic plan in these spaces, I think we could find some win-win solutions, whether that's in the city or whether that's out in the county. I don't think everyone has to be annexed to be part of the city, to be at the table in a regional plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Incumbent can tell me? So what is your opinion of the public's negative views towards our area's landowners, who have a right to develop their property? And as a council member, how would you help solve that or improve it?
I think I've made no secret about this in many council meetings and in a lot of study sessions. I think it was a mistake to vilify the developers. I don't like their growth either, but let's be honest. Let me tell you some of the things I discovered in some of the committees and boards that I have served on. We have roughly a population, and this is going to be general numbers, right now, 45,000 people. There are studies I've been a part of that says that complete growth in Prescott, once we've built out, we can only go to about 84,000. We have roughly 20,000 approved homes, between the Deepwell Ranch Eco Development and a couple of smaller. So think about that. That's 25,000 more potential homes that we're going to have at some point before we are completely, you know, grown out, or the growth is taken care of. But let me tell you what happens when people talk about growth paying for growth. And this is where the breakdown, I believe. Having been in this business, by the way, for 40 years. I was an arbitrator for the Arizona ROC for 20 years. I arbitrated cases like this. It's always been a misunderstanding. But what we have to do in our city, and we've got an opportunity right now to do that. By the way, there's not one member of this, and no offense to anybody, you guys all have your areas of strength. This is my area. I have dealt with this for 40 years in construction and issues like this. What we need to do in this city is clearly define when these developers come, when they, they've got to have a clear understanding what it means when growth pays for growth. Let me define that for you. What we're talking about is you, the taxpayer. When we allow a big development to come in, you, the taxpayer, have to provide the services. I would like to see a situation where we have it clearly defined when these builders come before us with these big pads, a planned area development, they have a deep understanding of what part they play now. It's one thing for us to participate in putting all the roads in, the infrastructure. Now all of a sudden, we have to pay for a new fire station, a new police station, to accommodate the growth. I would like them to have a little more skin in the game to pay, help us all pay for those services that we are obligated to pay for. I've got to stop there. But if you want to ask me anything about that later, let's talk about that. Thank you.
So that concludes our questions. And my first thanks goes out to each of you, each of you for running for office. At times, I'm sure it feels thankless and never-ending, but we need leaders. We need public leaders, people to step up and say, "I'm going to contribute and pay it forward to the next group that follows you." So first, thanks to all of you for being here tonight, for being out there and running for office, and for those of you who have already served for serving. So thank you. Secondly, I'd like to thank all the folks behind me and all the folks that will be watching this in the future, the voters. This is a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And I'm glad they're engaged. I'm glad they're here tonight, and I hope they think seriously about their choices. And I want to thank all of you for being here. This event will be rebroadcast on signalsaz.com by the end of the week. So for those of you who, you know that somebody didn't get to watch it tonight, it'll be rebroadcast so people can listen. So thank you all for being here tonight. And I'd like to thank our sponsors, the Prescott Chamber of Commerce, Yavapai Contractors Association, and Talking Glass Media. Thank you all.